... indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Presidential comments?
The only comment I have is, thank you very much for attending and thank you very much Representative Holgren for being here today. We always appreciate it. This way we can have our voice heard a little farther than Jolie is, so we much appreciate your attendance. And that's all I have. Trustees?
Trustee comments?
I would just like to follow up with Mayor Collins' comments. Welcome Congressman to Village of Plainfield. We appreciate your interest and support.
I would like to welcome Congressman Holgren as well, and all the people that have come out here between, from the citizens to the different representatives that we have in the areas around us throughout Will County because I, you know, to take time out of busy work schedules, it's really much appreciated, so thank you.
There's several other elected officials, as well as former elected officials that have served in our community as well that have attended, and as well as a planning commissioner, it looks like, as well. So, thank you for coming and your interest.
We're having problems hearing. Okay. Alan, is the, the mic's on?
We'll just talk really loud. How about that? We'll get, uh-
We'll correct the issue in just a couple minutes.
Thanks for pointing that out, though. I appreciate it.
Is that on?
You can hear us now?
Yeah.
How about if I talk really quiet?
Yeah.
I'm not kidding. Thank you very much. Sorry about that Congressman. Well, our one and only topic of the day, Congressman Holgren. So, welcome and turn it over to you.
Well, thank you so much. It is always so good to be in Plainfield and appreciate the incredible work that you all do. This is such a exciting community, so many good things happening here, such a good story to tell of what's happening in Plainfield and so much of that is by your leadership. And just want to thank you all for doing that. For me, it's a great privilege to be able to represent a good part of Plainfield. And we want to be always available and accessible, want to know how we can come alongside what you're doing and be of help in any way that we can to residents of Plainfield, but also the vision for the future for Plainfield, which I think is so bright and so exciting to me. I'm also really excited to have my staff, really our entire staff of both my DC office and also our district's office is here. And our hope is really for us to be able to make connections, for you to meet the people who are helping me every single day, serve you and serve the residents of Plainfield, and be able to dig into some issues that are important to all of you. I know transportation is one that I hope we can focus on a little bit more today, get a little bit of an update from last time I was here a few months ago, and hear how things are going. And again, if, anything that we can be doing to be of assistance. If it's appropriate, I would like to see if maybe I could have each of my staff just step, stand up, introduce themselves, and maybe talk about the specific area of work that they do, just so you can kind of, again, connect a voice and name with a face. And if there is anything specific for mayor, for trustees, for people who are city directors or village directors or constituents here, if there's something that's important to you, so you can kind of connect up of who on my staff is focused on that. So, if that's all right, is that appropriate? So, I think Catherine, if you wouldn't mind starting, introducing yourself, and then we'll kind of just go through our staff.
If you come to the microphone, please, that we finally figured out and hung her up.
I actually could be very loud.
Yes.
I'm Catherine McGuire. I'm the Congressman's Chief of Staff, and I am responsible for administrative activities at the office, but also political as well. And I bring this year, 20 years of policy expertise also to the table. So, I am a traffic cop of sorts. We've got a fabulous staffer who will introduce herself. If you ever need assistance, I'm always available. You guys can give me a call and I'll make sure you get a response. Thank you.
Nick Provenzano. I worked for the Congressman in the district office and primarily focused on the northern part of the district. I also bring 12 years of local government as an elected county board member for McHenry County. So, any type of municipal or county assistance, I'd be more than happy to help. Thank you.
My name's Andrew Mooney, Legislative Assistant for the Congressman in DC. Worked primarily with issues for the Committee on Science-Based Technology, but also energy, environmental issues, EPA. Anything you can help with, certainly, I know. Thank you.
My height. Ammon Simon. I cover banking, capital markets, regulations, along with housing for the Congressman in DC.
Hi, I'm Elise Talison. I also work out in Congressman Holgren's Washington office. I handle healthcare predominantly, also social security and some labor issues as well.
Hi, I'm Gina Gregalounas. I'm out in the Washington DC office as well, originally from Batavia. So, I handle the Congressman's transportation, veterans, postal issues, and things of that nature. Thanks.
Susan Russell out of the Geneva office. I work with education, also connecting coalition groups on the ground, faith-based organizations, non-for-profits. And I've been also involved with the heroin epidemic through the 14th Congressional.
I'm Jameson Cunningham. I'm Communications Director for the Congressman out in DC. I grew up in Wheaton and handle anything having to do with communications to and from the office, constituent communications, media relations, that sort of thing.
I'm Ruth Richardson. I work out of the Geneva District Office. I do constituent services, help with federal agencies, social security, veterans, active military. I have 24 years of congressional experience. And I'm also the point person who is helping the Plainfield Historical Society hopefully move the mural out of the post office into the Plainfield Library.
Hi, I'm Carol Berger. I work out of the Geneva office. And I do also constituent services. My area is immigration, ICE, CBP, State Department, visas, anything along those lines. So, we always love to help people navigate their way through the federal government. So, feel free to call us anytime.
Brandon McKee with Congressman Holgren in the DC office. I handle special projects for the Congressman, also help with technology, education, and agriculture.
I'm not really a microphone guy, so you can hear me, but I'm Reed Sullivan. I work out in our, I work out in our district office. I know actually a good handful of you here, and I appreciate Margie and Nick helping me get this all together last minute, but I do appreciate it. And if anybody needs anything from me, I do local government and transportation outreach.
Finally, I'm Doug Thomas. I'm Congressman Holgren's Deputy Chief of Staff and Legislative Director. I work out of the Washington office. I bring close to 20 years of experience too at Capitol Hill and other places in Washington. Work mainly on appropriations, business tax, those types of issues, and general oversight of the legislative operations.
I want to thank, again, thank you for allowing me to have my staff introduce themselves. We really feel like this is a unique opportunity and are so grateful for, again, on short notice, pulling this meeting together, for us to be able to come and introduce ourselves, but also to hear from you. You've heard me say this before, that just convinced that the work that you do has the greatest impact on the people that we serve together. I have had the privilege of my own career of working in local government, started on the county board in DuPage County, and then state government, 12 years in Springfield, eight in the House, four in the Senate, and now just starting my fifth year out in Washington in federal government in Congress. And more convinced than ever that the most dangerous form of government is federal government because it's furthest from the people. The most effective is local government. But it's also the toughest because everything you do is in everybody's backyards. And so, you have to be doing the right things and have to make sure they're done correctly and accountably and transparently. And that's exactly what needs to happen. So, want to help you in the great work that you do. I'm also more convinced than ever that during difficult times where we don't have huge revenue pots available for us to dip into, we don't have earmarks any longer, I think, again, that's appropriate, but we have to make sure that we are communicating and we're locking arms, local, state, and federal, finding ways to get good projects done that will have an impact regionally and benefit regions. And that is what I hope out of this. And we've got good relationships, bipartisan relationships with other, my colleagues, Congressman Foster, Congressman Kinzinger, others that are in the area that represent close by. And I think there is important opportunities coming up, hopefully, to pass a surface transportation reauthorization, multi-year with good funding. And through that, I think how we're going to, we need to identify local projects. And the way I, my guess is that that's going to be done is through the committee, but also through delegations coming together and identifying what projects have the best regional impact. And so, I want to encourage you to help us know what that is, any ways that we can, again, be bringing municipalities and townships and state representatives, state senators, members of Congress and our US senators, together to lock arms on a project, saying that this is important. I think it gives us our best shot of being able to have revenue and have funding to be able to complete those projects. So, this could be an important year, a strategic year, coming off of the President's State of the Union address on Tuesday night. It was one of the things he did bring up that pretty much everybody agreed with, that we need to do infrastructure projects. That, that is so important right now. And I know there's very important things that we need to be working on here in Will County, specifically in Plainfield. So, the timing is important. Grateful to have my staff here and for us to find out how we can be of help with the great work that you all are doing. So, that is the purpose we have. We want to learn from you. We want to stay in touch. I know we've started that process. We just want to grow it, of always being available, reminding you that don't assume we know something. So, if something is important to you, let us know about it. The sooner the better. The sooner we can be talking about it, the better. The more in contact we can be, the better. So, again, thank you for this. And we're here to learn from you, hear what's happening, and hear what we can bring back to Washington, and how we can rally my colleagues, again, around great things that are going on in Will County, going on in Plainfield, or great things that could happen here, and how we can come along and help. So, with that, love just to hear what you're all working on, and again, what we can be helpful with.
Thank you Congressman. Actually, I've kind of been tasked with kind of giving a quick little update and primer on where we are. Thankfully, John Grueling from Will County CED is also in the audience, and he can fill you in on some other efforts that are going on in our area. But the last time, well, not the last time, but the second-to-last time you were here, we actually made a visit over to a company called Coil Plus. And at that time, they were talking about possibly doing their expansion. They've actually just completed their expansion, so we're absolutely thrilled. They've doubled the size of their facility. It's now 140,000 square feet. It is absolutely tremendous, the amount of work that they are doing out of that facility. Also, Diageo, which is right next door to them, they've expanded to 10 fully operating lines. At this point, they still have room to expand within the facility, but they're doing famously well. And as well, our plastics industries that all seem to be clustered around there also are reporting some good growth. So, on the industrial side, we continue to see some really good growth. The biggest challenge that they bring up to us regularly is traffic and transportation, specifically as it relates to, you know, everything is pretty much for us along 143rd Street. So, that 143rd Street Extension Project that we talked about before continues to be a very pressing, not just local issue for us, but it also becomes a big regional issue as well because it does open up corridors going out west. Yorkville and Oswego both talk of that as a key regional mechanism to get through. It also does then ultimately help us to alleviate some of the struggles that we have with CN. The CN issues continue to be issues for us. And thank you for meeting with us before on that very topic. It did, the publicity out of that did allow for the mayor to actually have a meeting with some of their governmental staff. They said that they'd take a look at our concerns. I guess they're still looking at our concerns. Would that be a nice way to put it, Mayor? The challenges still stand for us there. Humbly, they had their CEO come into the Chicagoland area, and he was interviewed by cranes. And let's just say the hubris carries down from the top. So, we still are quite worried and concerned about what that means for us. They said that they'd take a look at this hot box issue. By the sounds of it, all that they would do is possibly move the issue to another problem in our community. The hot box, for all intents and purposes, looks as though it needs to be located within our corporate limits because of their network requirements. That being said, so when these things get triggered, the way that they trigger, they'll still continue to block road networks within our town. We're not all that happy about that as an answer, but again, it does require us to take a look and push for other road networks so that if that's indeed the problem and we're stuck with it, that we have to come up with better, and I hate to say this, but federal solutions to improve our road network, to get folks to A and B through our town without big trains blocking our roads for two, three hours at a time. Alan can probably talk a little bit about the 143rd Street Project, but before I did that, since I did call on Mr. Grueling, is it okay if I ask John to kind of come up and talk about some of the great things that are happening here in Northwest Will County?
Thank you Brian. Welcome Congressman, always. As you know, Will County is a thriving business environment. Last year, we just gave our report to our investors, and we had 54 major new projects come to Will County, creating over 5,000 jobs. And they occupy almost 12.8 million square feet of mostly industrial, commercial space, with an investment exceeding $700 million. And Pat Ferris here to talk about some of our workforce opportunities and challenges. But our biggest issue with employers continues to be skilled workers, making sure that we are providing not just the numbers of people to work in these new facilities, but that they have the training and the skills, or the ability to get the training and the skills. And we're excited about the new Workforce Investment Act under the federal government, and hopefully we'll be able to make some very local decisions that impact us very, very successfully with our economic development program. Brian mentioned transportation. You know, I think the, the work that we're doing with villages like Plainfield underscored the importance of infrastructure. You know that we're the largest inland container port in North America, and that takes a lot of infrastructure investment, both from the public and private sector. And I think we're a leader in private sector investment in infrastructure, which is a good thing. And, and working with, with businesses like Coil Plus, and there's other expansions in the, on the horizon here for Plainfield, but I do think in some particular instances, the transportation challenges are really top of mind. Along those lines, the Center for Economic Development is urging Congress to consider and approve a multi-year, five- to six-year transportation funding bill. We also believe that it should have a significant freight component. We move America on railroads, rivers, and airplanes, and we really need an ongoing, long-term commitment from the federal government to make sure we can do the planning at all levels, at state, local, and the federal level, to attack these problems. I can also tell you, on behalf of my membership, we support an increase in the federal gas tax. We know revenues are constrained, and they will continue to be constrained at all levels of government. Therefore, we are strongly of the opinion that we need to raise the federal gas tax. That's, may not be the best way, but that certainly is a way to generate some revenue to get this, this new multi-year package off the ground. We're also very interested in watching this discussion about the possible treatment of tax-exempt municipal bonds affecting whether or not the full tax abatement is available there for the investment community. On the flip side of that, we're very interested in the, in the proposed QIB, Qualified Public Improvement Bond Program, and kind of excited about that opportunity. And you and I haven't had a chance to talk about that, but I'm certainly hopeful to speak more with your staff about how that might work and how it could be applied here in Will County in Illinois. One other thing along transportation, you know, a lot of our residents commute every day to work. Unfortunately, they're forced into automobiles, which adds to the transportation problem. But one of the issues I know is in front of Congress is the bringing parity on the tax benefit for parking benefits for commuters equal to, equal to the transit benefit. It's not that much money. And again, I believe it's Representative Peter King has a, has a bill that addresses that issue. We think that would be a good move for some of the suburban commuters, and I hope you, you and the staff take a close look at that. Other than that, we're excited about being one of the fastest growth centers for new jobs in the metro Chicago area. You're welcome anytime to come visit us, both south of the border and in your area. And thank you for coming today. Thank you.
John mentioned, you know, a couple of projects. I got to tell you that we are blessed to have the Center for Economic Development be our public-private partner. They've done just a wonderful job in helping us out as we've grown in the past few years. And actually, as John mentioned, there are two businesses that we're currently talking with. We're still at an early stage, but, you know, in one case, we're looking at retaining and expanding an existing business that will retain and expand to 150 jobs. The other one is taking a look at adding another 100 jobs to our area. So, and these aren't, these aren't beginner position jobs. These are highly technical, very well-paid. As John mentioned, one of the challenges that we have is recruiting the right, or having the right skill sets here within our community. But the CED has done a lot of great lifting on that, and I can't thank them enough for, for the work they've been doing. So, that kind of does get to our transportation stuff, and I thought I'd ask Alan to perhaps tell you a little bit about 143rd Street Project. And then as well, the other regional project, and Congressman, I'm sorry, it's escaped my mind when I was making the introduction. We partnered actually with Romeoville in Bolingbrook to take a look at interchange improvements at 126 and at, we call it Lockport Road, Romeoville calls it Airport Road, and 55. And we're still in Phase 1, I believe, on that particular project. But that has some regional importance, not just to the Village of Plainfield, but also to the two other communities. So, Alan, if you wouldn't mind providing perhaps a little update on 143rd Street Extension?
Yeah, just briefly, and, and thank you again for taking the time out today to hear concerns and connect with the village. Plainfield, of course, is unique. We have three majors state roadways that intersect within our community, Route 59, Route 30, Route 126, and then we have I-55 too as well. So, we, traffic is a big issue in town. We actually, the Board adopted a transportation plan, which actually includes not only highway transportation, but also pedestrian-friendly improvements, other bus, train, things like that. It looks a little thin compared to what you probably see in Washington, but this is actually the combination of 10 different documents that spanned a period of time to bring it together in a very user-friendly document that we could distribute to the public and that people could just pick it up and see what our vision, what the mayor and Board's vision is for the future as far as transportation is concerned. So, we are very, and as a public works guy, I can tell you my ears perked up when the President said investment into infrastructure, because that means improvements to the roadways, improvements to the water and sewer systems, and things of that nature too as well. We've done a good job in the past in partnering with IDOT on many of these projects because they are, they do affect their roadways, or they are included in their jurisdiction. 143rd Street, as Mr. Murphy had mentioned, is a huge, we see as a huge regional benefit for the entire area, not just for the Village of Plainfield. IDOT concurs with that. We recently had the Phase 1 environmental report approved, so we've received all the environmental clearances as far as the construction of the project is concerned. And from this point, we're headed into the phase of actual design for the structures, for the improvements, and also the property acquisition part of it. Another partner that's very important in the project is Commonwealth Edison. And we've been meeting with Commonwealth Edison on a regular basis for the past three years, and we're going to continue to need their partnership to make this project a reality. Last but not least is funding. This project is at least in the $20 million range. It may be even a little higher. We realize that the federal government, at this point, is not going to have quote-unquote earmarks within the transportation or with any of the bills at Washington. But we would hope that some funding, whether it's an increase in the gas tax or other areas at the federal level, would make its way to Illinois so we could work directly with IDOT on these very important projects within the Village of Plainfield. I think that's a quick summation of 143rd Street, but it is a very important link for the community, and it's a project that's been high on the radar as far as the mayor, Board, and many of our citizens here.
Can I ask you a quick question? If you can just walk through the, help us understand the 20 million, what that goes towards, or what the exact improvement will, is required, and, and also timeframe of when you think this could happen?
Yeah, the, the roadway stretches approximately two miles. Currently, 143rd Street ends at Route 59. This extension would actually extend into the Commonwealth Edison right-of-way property to the east, and would extend and link up all the way with Route 126. Now, the challenge in this project is the crossing of the DuPage River. What it involves is the construction of a bridge that is approximately 900 feet long, elevated above the river and all of the wetlands. This is one of the reasons why we were able to receive the environmental clearances. We're having a minimal impact on wetlands and on potential flooding and things of that nature. They were all taken into consideration. So, this is not going to be an impediment as far as flooding is concerned, and not going to be a detriment as far as the environment is concerned. It does include a roadway, a four-lane section of highway, also of walkways on either side of the roadway, so there's pedestrian accommodations that are included, as well as street lighting. There are new traffic signals that would be in, have to be installed at 59 and 143rd, as well as Route 126. But in essence, it would take the traffic that's traveling along Route 30, Route 59, and currently Route 143rd Street, and give people, trucks, as well as vehicles, a direct connection to Route 126, which opens up that interchange at I-55. And again, our industrial, as Mr. Murphy had mentioned, our industrial, larger industrial, commercial centers are all centrally located near, most of them are centrally located near 143rd Street. This opens up access, and it really helps create jobs and helps those industries expand their businesses as well.
We also see it as an opportunity to help with the bottleneck that occurs when we have those CN train issues. As Mr. Person's mentioned, Route 30, Route 59, and Route 126, the three major state routes that come through our community, all converge together right at our downtown area. And humbly, so is that hot box. So, when the train has to be brought to a stop because of this hot box issue, essentially, it blocks off, at the very least, two, if not all three, of those state routes. It becomes a very big challenge within the community. Our police department is inundated with calls at that point and the like, and it really has been very problematic. So, we also see this as one of those potential federal solutions to, if we can redirect where those, where that traffic goes, as we work then, hopefully with CN, on those hot box issues, it does help to open up some traffic. Before we go on to C-, yes, sir?
If I can just say one thing on that too. Positive and negative in Illinois, I, I think it's still true, but, you know, there's more rail crossings in Illinois by far than any other place in the nation. In fact, I've heard that you add up every place else in the nation, we still have more just in Illinois. I don't know if that's absolutely true or not, but we have a lot. And certainly in the 14th Congressional District, trains are incredibly important, getting people to Chicago, moving product, but also challenges there. We've seen it with life safety issues that can come up as well, of getting emergency vehicles across tracks or through bridges that weren't made recently, you know, and so tunnels that are too small to get traffic through. So, anyhow, that might be something we, and maybe- we, maybe we've already done that work or that research, but we do know there's some opportunity, and maybe additional push or leverage that we can use if there is a question of getting someone to a hospital, or getting ambulances, or fire engines to certain parts of the community. That's part of, I think, an important part of the presentation that we need to make as well, of why this is important. So, if you can, if that does apply, which it sounds like it might, especially if trains are blocking crossings, to have that alternative route, that's something I think that could be very compelling part of a presentation, hopefully, that we'll be making over the next months.
Congressman, you bring up an excellent point with regard to at-grade crossings in Illinois. And out of all the suburbs that this rail runs through, Plainfield has the most crossings by far. We have 17 at-grade crossings in our community, and when a substantially long train blocks several of those crossings, it poses a tremendous, tremendous danger.
Congressman, I wanted to add, one other value that this project that Alan just discussed would mention to our businesses is that, right now, to have a semi-truck go to 143rd, it has to go all the way down the Route 30 to access 55 South. Having this project move forward, you're going to, you're going to see our company's businesses on 143rd pay less for the overhead expenses to have shipping in and out, because they're going to have direct access right to the highway. It's approximately an extra, I'd say, 10 to 15 minutes, yeah, at least, to access the highway, in addition to decreasing traffic. So, that is another added benefit. It will actually lower the operation costs for our businesses in town.
What you brought up, good point, sir, is also it dissects our towns such as our fire stations. We do have fire stations on both sides, so that's all right. But if there was a police emergency, it might affect them, because our police is on the western portion, so anything eastern and southern could be affected in their response time. So, this is one of our main concerns also.
If I may, I'd like to add one, one thought while we're discussing transportation. Several years ago, largely due to the efforts of State Representative Tom Cross, we began discussions about a Star Line, a commuter rail to and from Chicago. I can't stress enough that not only do we need public transportation to and from Chicago, but interconnections with the suburbs out here. As this community and this region builds out, having a rail for public transportation is an immense challenge, but an immense need as well.
Trustee Faes, correct. Actually, we host the Pace Lines here, which are the bus routes that go to the city of Chicago. We have two different routes that actually start off here in Plainfield, and then they go to various other communities on their way. Their biggest challenge, actually, has been the rail lines. That, the challenges for them in Plainfield is they just don't know when the trains are going to be in their way. And that definitely impacts their commute time and their responsibility to their, to their riders. So, they, too, would be very much impacted and interested in coming up with a long-term solution. We've been working with them, they, to try to find some alternative locations, so that they can still start and end here in Plainfield. We have a very large need within our community for their services, and they love the amount of ridership that they're getting, but the trains do prove to be problematic for them as well. So, that might be as well, something as well for us to include in that conversation.
We have had meetings with CN, and they've been quite receptive, but we talked about the hot wheel issue. And what it is, is after it goes by a detector, the train has to stop, and then it has to be inspected. Well, they don't just inspect the hot wheel, they inspect the whole train at that time. And this is where we run into problems. And with that said, the train has stopped blocking these crossings, and they've run into the issue where the engineer runs out of time, so now it has to sit there for a time, waiting for a new crew to come. And sometimes this could be hours. And just like the rest of the people on the board have said, sometimes this is, this is more than an hour, which, as they said, 126, Route 30, Route 59 are blocked. So, it's, it's really an issue around, around the town.
I do want to take a chance as well, and recognize Nick Palmer with the county. Nick's in the audience, and I know he had a few other items to talk about.
Congressman, Mayor, trustees, we have actually several staff here who are going to make presentations. I'm going to let them go first, and then I'm going to say a few words, too. But first up is Bruce Gould, who's our county engineer, director of the Division of Transportation. He's going to come up and talk about transportation. So, Bruce?
Alan, is that microphone on?
Yes. Morning.
I want to thank you, your staff, for inviting me, and the Village of Plainfield for inviting me here this morning to make a brief presentation. If I could just give a little history lesson on our Build Will program, I don't know, I'm sure people in the village have heard about this. I don't know if you and your staff have heard about it. In 2008, the county unveiled the Build Will program. It consisted of 60 projects throughout the county, and it was primarily to be paid for by the quarter cent RTA tax that was enacted about that same time. Unfortunately, soon after we unveiled the Build Will program, the economy took a dive. We unveiled the program in October, and about a month later, the economy really started to take a dive. Because of that, the county decided, we need to do something in Will County to jumpstart the economy, as the federal government did with the stimulus program. We kind of called Build Will our Will County stimulus program. And by doing, we bonded $100 million to try to jumpstart the economy in the county, and put forward a lot of projects, to put people to work, contractors, so on and so forth. And in that time, another 23 projects were added to Build Will, for a total cost of approximately $383 million. Now, in that time, since we started the program, which was about 2008, 2009, we have put out approximately $125 million worth of work. We had a lot of work in the program left, and that work is being primarily paid for by the RTA tax, county MFT, local funding, and, and federal grants that we receive. A couple of projects that I'd just like to briefly talk about, one that is within your district, sir, is the 95th Street at Plainfield-Naperville intersection. We, the 95th Street extension is a project that we've been working on for approximately 10 years. It, it was a new river crossing across the DuPage River. It linked the Village of Bolingbrook to Naperville, and it terminated just to the west of the intersection of Naperville Road. We have completed the corridor up to the intersection. We are hoping to complete the intersection this year, pending right-of-way. We've got a few right-of-way parcels that we have to acquire. It's a $7 million project. It'll, it'll add to this corridor for traffic congestion. It's traffic signal upgrade, and there's a new structure that's going to be reconstructed east, excuse me, west of the intersection. So, that's one project that I'd like to, that's within our Build Will program. One, another project, a major project, that is not within your district, but it is a major project, and it affects regionally this entire area, is the I-55 at Weber Road Interchange. We partnered with the state of Illinois for this interchange project. It is part of our Build Will project. $100 million project. It extends from 119th Street, south to 135th Street. Two-mile project. It is ad-lanes, a six-lane corridor. It's going to be a completely new interchange, a DDI, if you've heard that term, diverging diamond. It'll be the second one in the state of Illinois. The first one is the one at Ogden and 88, which is under construction right now. This will be the second one. The state received design approval for this project January 31st of last year. We are moving forward with design right now for this project. Total cost, $100 million. We are waiting for the call for Tiger funds. I talked to one of your staff members today. There still has not been a call yet. As soon as the call for Tiger grant comes forward, we are going to make application for it. I think it's, it's a regional project. It's significant for this area to move traffic. A lot of crashes have occurred in that area because of the congestion. That's our highest-traveled county highway, and of course, I don't need to tell anybody about the traffic that we have on I-55 in this area. So, we're looking forward to moving this project forward. Hopefully, we could get Tiger grant funding for this, and your support would be greatly appreciated. One other project that I would just briefly like to talk about, that is not within this area, but regionally, it is a big issue in Will County, is the Eliana Expressway. I'm sure you've heard a lot of talk about that. It links I-65 in Lowell, Indiana, to I-55 in Will County. It crosses the entire stretch in Will County, the 47-mile corridor. It cuts completely through Will County, the part that's in the state of Illinois. With the intermodals that we have down in Joliet and Elwood, we've got the biggest inland port in the country. And I don't know if there's an inland port, maybe, John, you could say, there's one in the world any bigger, you know, there are on the coast, but it's huge, the amount of truck traffic down there. This corridor is greatly needed along this part of the county, to relieve congestion on, on multiple interstates, 65, 57, 80, 55, state highways, local highways in this region. It's greatly needed for Will County. Any support that you could give for this would, would be appreciated by the county. With that, that's all I have to say. If there's any questions for anybody?
I can tell you that while those two projects that you mentioned aren't within your boundaries or within our corporate limits, we do see those as strategic improvements needed for the area. A lot of our residents actually travel over to the Weber Road Interchange. It is a very much, a much-needed improvement to the area, especially while we still are just in the Phase One studies for Airport Lockport Road and for 126. So, it very much is very much needed. We also see the Eliana as the, the truck traffic on 55 and on 80 are very much a challenge. You know, this will provide a great relief along those corridors, and also then it provides for a great opportunity for further growth for business within all of Will County. And a rising tide always lifts all ships. So, we're very much in support of both those projects.
If I could just make one other comment in regards to the intermodal traffic. I don't know if you heard, but the 28th of this month, next Wednesday, Walter Strawn Drive, which was one of the major roads into the port, will be closed. Administrative law judge at the ICC ruled that this should be closed for, for traffic reasons, for possibility of crashes along there. They, they are closing that. That is one of the major access points with that. With that closure, that is just going to add that much more traffic on I-80 and I-55. So, without this Eliana road, it's really going to exacerbate the situation down in that part of the county. Thank you.
We also have Pat Farah, who's our workforce investment board director, is coming up. We thank you, Congressman. I know you've been out before and met with Pat and some of her board members. So, Pat?
Great, thanks. Thank you, Congressman, and Mayor, and trustees, Village manager. Appreciate you giving me a few minutes to talk. And I know some of the staff, so it's been a pleasure to work with your staff. They're great, and we thank you for your vote on the Workforce Innovation and Opportunities Act, which is our new legislation. John Grueling mentioned the importance of workforce to the employers. We know that so many new employers are coming to Will County, and it's my role to make sure that we have people who are prepared for those jobs. And even more critical, with our unemployment rate dropping, employers are going to have a more and more difficult time finding workers. So, we're really looking to the new legislation to help us develop programs that meet those needs for our current employers. As the Department of Labor issues regulations around the legislation, we have some issues that we definitely want to make sure we express, and I've talked to Doug about those a little bit, and have some comments that we can, we can talk further about. Regulations have been pushed off for a few months, so while we're implementing July 1, we hope to get regulations maybe in March or April. But we're moving forward. We think it's too important to wait, and we'll see what, how our plans work out with that. The focus on employers and work-based learning has been critical, and especially under the new legislation. We think that it's important we work more closely with employers to make sure that the opportunities that they have to hire people, we can assist with through those federal dollars. In Will County, we get about $6.5 million in workforce funds every year, and serve almost 6,000 residents through our workforce program. So, we want to make sure we can continue to increase those numbers and meet the needs of our employers. Our unemployment rate dropped from 8.2% in November of 13 to 5.5% in November of 14. We saw an increase of 8,000 jobs in Will County in the last year. So, that means that we need, we have a smaller pool of people competing for a larger number of jobs, and we need to work even harder to make sure that we make that connection. So, this new legislation and the regulations that come out of it are going to be really important. And as we work with other state agencies, and that's one of our challenges, is with the new administration in the state, some of the state agency opportunities that we might have had, or relationships that we might have had in the past, we're going to recreate. So, we're looking forward to developing relationships, both at the state level and with your staff and your office, and you, and other congressional leaders. So, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it, and appreciate your vote on the Workforce Investment Act.
I'm, I'm going to try to touch on a few issues and try not to go too far into the weeds, but I'm here on behalf of County Executive Larry Walsh. He unfortunately couldn't be here. He sends his regrets, Congressman. I know you are colleagues in General Assembly. He's enjoyed working with you in your new role as a congressman. We, like I said already, we appreciate you coming out previously and working closely. I'm going to touch on three things. One is one successful effort we had last year that may lead to some other work in the coming year, some ongoing issues that your staff may be interested in, and then some other projects that my colleagues have already touched on. I also have some handouts for your staff. I'm going to send around for the folks in the audience. As we all know, Will County is one of the fastest-growing counties in the country, let alone in the state. We're expected to be the second-largest county in the state eventually, behind Cook. And anyone in Village of Plainfield, Plainfield Township, Wheatland Township, your district, knows how rapid the growth has been, which challenges our infrastructure, which has already been touched on, challenges our services. But we're expected to be 1.2 million by 2030, 2035-ish. We're served, Will County as a whole is served by six congressional members, which we're glad to have. We have a caucus, really, of the Illinois delegation, six of the 18. We hope the Will County delegation will meet soon, and our two centers. We've enjoyed good relationship with all of those folks, and we appreciate it. The one issue I wanted to just touch on, as far as a federal issue that we dealt with last year successfully, was our Prairie View landfill. It was originally the former Joliet Arsenal ammunition plant. In 1996, it was decommissioned, and as part of the agreement on there, there was economic development opportunities there, which have resulted in our intermodal facilities. There's the Abraham Lincoln Cemetery, and there's also the county landfill, which we went through the process. I'm not going to go into that, but we selected Waste Management as the operator for that. They've been operating successfully since 2004. Unfortunately, during that time, there was a restriction placed, and it was probably one of the only restrictions in the country on a federally cited process, that restricted it only to Will County waste, and put a time limit on that. And through our success in working with places like the Village of Plainfield, the townships, we have increased our recycling significantly, which resulted in extending the life of that landfill. And we projected that that would, our, the lifetime we had would be surpassed, just because we had reduced the amount of materials going, electronic and other things. So, we were successful working with your office and your colleague, Congressman Kinzinger, Senator Kirk, Senator Durbin, to get additional 15 years extended. Senator Kirk, Senator Durbin, to get additional 15 years extended. We appreciate that, that was a huge success for us. We believe that will probably be enough time to fill it up at its current site. And the nuance then, again, I'm not trying to get too far into the weeds, is this is adjacent to the Medawinn Tallgrass Prairie, which there's sensitivities, Medawinn is, has a plan for a long-term. We work very closely with their supervisor there and I think that's why we were able to get this done, working with all the partners. We may be back to you, this is kind of just a heads up to look at the restriction on the county restriction. We can accept from municipalities that are in part in Will County, so a Plainfield which straddles the border, we can accept Naperville has just become a client of Waste Management, but there's opportunities to the west of us here in other counties that they could access the site, which keeps costs down for our residents and that's a real benefit to us. So, and I just, I mentioned Medawinn, as part of the agreement of the original deed, we accept any remediated waste from the old ammunition plant. There hasn't been a lot of funding for that, so that's kind of delayed their progress on their long-term plan. We're hoping that working with the private sector and the federal government and locally, we can get some more of that remediation done, which helps Medawinn also is part of the agreement to get that waste in the landfill, but we may come and talk to you about that. But that's, that's a real big success and we appreciate all the help at the federal level. On the local level, I just want to touch on, because I know your office has been a leader in this, is the heroin efforts. I'm going to pass one other document around, sorry. We're having an event that we've had the last couple of years related to heroin prevention and the, Will County, like our Coller County colleagues, have taken different approaches, but some collaborative. We took a more education role initially, whereas State DuPage went more on the Narcan, you know, the antidote, kind of bringing people back. Now, we've kind of flipped roles, they're getting more involved in the education and we're doing the Narcan, but basically, there's two major efforts in Will County. The education, which I sent around, we have a forum April 10, we welcome your staff and anybody in the public here to attend, that's 8:00 AM to noon, it's just to save the day at this point, but that's over at the Romi-Ville Athletic Center. This is, brings together social service providers, substance abuse groups, people who've been a victim of this or families are supporting recovering heroin users. We've been successful, we think in part because of these efforts. In 2012, we had 53 heroin-related deaths. In 2013, that dropped to 38, which was a 35% decrease, and in 2014, it dropped to 34. So, still too many, but we're on the education side, we're working currently in the Valleyview Schools in the junior high to try to educate young people about the dangers and their families, because I know I heard when this first started happening, 2011, parents didn't know how to handle it because it's such an aggressive substance abuse and they didn't know how to handle it. So, we're trying to attack it from the education side, but Will County has also launched a Narcan program this year. We've begun with Village of Bullingbrook, we're soon to be rolling that out with the Will County Sheriff's Department and other police departments that are interested in taking that program on. There are some concerns about, does this encourage use, but one of the great quotes I heard was, "Death is not a rehabilitation option. If you can bring somebody back from the brink, get them into a program and hopefully get them back on track." So, we're very excited about that and why your staff may be interested is both those efforts are being funded by justice assistance grants from the burn through the DOJ. We get a grant every year with the City of Joliet and we've chose to spend our funds the last two years on those programs. And we're using those as kind of pilot programs that hopefully can be replicated in other areas of the state, the county, country, what have you. So, last, I just, well, two things I want to touch on, other thing we have in our federal agenda each year, we come out and see you Congressman, I know you've seen these before, but we create a federal agenda book. We're working on publishing our book for this year, but we have an agenda ready to go. We'll be out to talk to you a range of issues, including some that I've touched on. But two things I think just worthy for your staff to understand, we're working on is, Will County's growing, we're trying to build a new courthouse, we're also looking at cost-cutting across the county. The court system, the law enforcement is a very costly part of our budget. We have an ongoing integrated justice committee, which is bringing all the stakeholders together, trying to look at ways we can more efficiently trade information, helps with everything from homeland security to just the local processing warrants and things like that. We've engaged the Will County Chiefs of Police, so they're involved in this effort too, but we're hoping to make progress on that as we move towards a courthouse. The other thing which has already been touched on a little bit, but on the economic development side, one of your staff was involved yesterday. We have this regional collaborative effort between the seven Coller Counties, including Cook and the City of Chicago. It's a very exciting effort because sometimes there's the, the Cook and the Collers and the City of Chicago battling. This is a very collaborative effort. I think even Toni Preckwinkle, President of Cook County, was moved, I think a little bit yesterday, when she said, "Things sometimes turn out better than you expect." It really is a successful collaborative effort. We're looking at truck permitting, how can we make that more efficient and, and really deal with the routing of trucks? Because I know here in Plainfield and especially around the intermodals, that's a huge issue. We've had a lot of federal assistance on that, but they're still probably more needed as far as infrastructure. One of the projects you'll hear more when we come to visit you is the Hubolt Bridge concept, which is directly out of the UP facility, directly to I-80. By building that bridge, it will get lots of trucks off Route 53, which I know is not your district, I believe that's mostly Congressman Foster's, but that's important for the whole region and that kind of is connected to this Coller County-Chicago example, is we're looking at the region as a whole, not, we know there's competition among counties and municipalities, but if we're not competitive as a region, we're going to lose out to places like Kansas City or Memphis or other parts of the country. We want to be competitive here in Illinois and restore that competitiveness. And the Hubolt Bridge is one of those. And the positive thing about that is thus far, there's been talk, and not a lot in the public, but this is potentially a privately funded or a public-private partnership, so we're hoping that can move along and we're going to talk to you more. We've talked to U.S. Department of Transportation, they were excited because of the regional significance of that. So, we've got a lot of other issues, but I'm not going to go any further. I appreciate the time, appreciate all your staff's participation and we're glad to help at any time. So, if there's any questions for any of our staff, we're glad to take those now.
Thank you.
Mr. Palmer, while you're there, can I ask a question? You mentioned the landfill out at the former Armory. What does the county have in place or what is being planned for household hazardous waste? I know it's a real challenge for our residents to deposit certain things and I know there are events held periodically and randomly, but is there a plan at the county level to receive household hazardous waste?
Simple answer, I guess, and I skimmed over some of that, I guess, is we continue to do those events, they are kind of periodic, not all the time. There used to be an IEPA grant that funded some of those, I know Naperville used to have one. Ours was more, we moved them around from year to year, so people had them. We are looking at, can we expand those at all? So, that, we have a lot of information, willcountygreen.com is a website that has a lot of information. But the other issue related to that, I guess, is not exactly the same thing, is electronic recycling, which I skimmed over, is I know here in Plainfield Vintage Tech, which I forget the name of the company.
Kusakowski.
There are some issues there that we're addressing, hopefully this spring at the General Assembly level on regulations on that, because it's becoming financially not possible to continue that work or it's, it's starting to shrink. But household hazardous waste, we're definitely looking at ways we can help with that. I'll just add one other piece about the landfill. One of the positives of that is not only did we get the site, get it developed, we've threw some federal stimulus money, we took $3 million, put part of that into retrofits of the county building, part of that into a gas-to-energy plant that's on that landfill, which is creating revenue from that methane gas and the electricity that's generated, and we're returning that to make other efficiencies at county buildings. And that's one pot of money we could possibly look at funding some additional household hazardous waste collections, but it is a real issue. We're trying to keep as much of that out of the landfills or other places where people shouldn't dump those, so we should talk more about that.
Thank you, thank you.
Nick, thank you very much for coming out today. Are there any other trustee comments?
I would like to make one comment. Congressman, obviously, regionally, everything's important, I don't have your job because everyone's here with many of the same issues. But I will tell you, Plainfield does not enjoy some of the benefits that our surrounding communities do for the access to the highways. Without these roads to be able to bypass, to be able to move industrial product across, we can't bring the industry in. We're in a catch-20 to situation, we need the industry to give tax relief to our residents, to give safety to us. We're the fourth-largest school district in the state and I can, you know, speak to that from my own personal experience from working for the schools, that when those, when we're tied up with traffic, when there's no bypasses, when there's trucks everywhere, it's, it's a safety issue, it's a timing issue, and it's a financial issue. And so, we truly do need some help to be on the same level Plainfield as our surrounding communities to be able to have those roads that connect us. So, I'm just making my pitch, thank you.
I think to Mrs. Benucci's point too, let alone the emergency, the buses, as they pick up in the morning and deposit at night, that buses are sitting all over because they cannot get across the crossings, so.
Mrs. Benucci said it very well. From my point of view, I've been on the board over nine years now. And number one project in that entire time, this is the 143rd Street thing, because it's the three roads that intersect are all within the downtown area and it's a nightmare to get around. So, love to see that go forward, it'll be the biggest difference for the region, it's not just for Plainfield. The other thing I mentioned, you mentioned up front, Plainfield is a very well-run organization. We do good planning, the public works, does a great job of preparing things, you know, transportation study, things like that, so we're well-prepared as a source of information for the region. We may be small, we'd like to be more involved in a sense, but we do our homework very, very well. And third thing, I'd like to compliment you for bringing your staff here, nice to see such a large staff you have, and give them a chance to meet us too, because we have a lot to offer and hopefully we can all work more together in the future.
Really Congressman, I also want to thank you. You know, you've been very visible in the community, especially with us. You know, I've been in local government management for 22 years and I've got to say thank you very much. In those 22 years, I've never had this much contact with a Congressman and that speaks volumes to you as a, as a person and your commitment to the community. So, personally, I just want to point that out and say thank you very much. Now, I know we, that was kind of a segue for my next part. I know we only have you for a limited period of time, but now is the time that we would take comments from the public.
Right.
Okay, so this is now the time to take comments from the public. So, please, if you have some comments, come up to the microphone.
May I also, is it appropriate if my staff have any questions, would this be a time where they could ask those questions as well?
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
I'll jump up.
Okay.
So, I greatly appreciated the presentations here and I have been sitting here thinking about bringing up the Alliance for Regional Development. I don't know if you are involved in that, but the Congressman got involved in that and we have a couple of us who are actively participating, one of them's on transportation, the other one is on the Workforce Task Force. This is a group that was born out of a, an OECD tri-state research paper of sorts several years back. And about a year ago, Governor Quinn, Governor Walker and Governor Pence got together and kicked off this new alliance of sorts to try to address regional transportation issues, but more than that, just regional development and prosperity. And I've just, I'm just bringing that, maybe, maybe I'll direct this to Brian, but can you tell me how active Will, I mean, Will County, but also Plainfield is in this effort? And the big question is, have us, the two of us on staff level, having participated in some of the meetings, are, what kind of, what's the value proposition?
You know, I, I.
At this point?
At this point, I wish Michael Garrigan were here, because I know that he has been actively involved with the group. He's our, he's our chief planner for the village and I'll circle back with you after talking with Michael to find out what he finds the value to be of that.
I would, I'd appreciate that.
Absolutely.
I, I think we've been very excited because there are a lot of great ideas that are being discussed jointly between the three states. And I know it would be nice to not have these other two states robbing us of our workforce and our jobs.
Yeah.
That's kind of how we think of it, but I think we've been sitting back and discussing amongst ourselves, you know, where, where is this going? Is this just an annual get-together where we all talk about good ideas or, you know, what, what's the action items that are going to come out of this? So, I greatly appreciate your input.
Ms. McGuire, if I could say something before you exit this stage, I know that we are, we participate in the CMAP, Chicago Metropolitan Alliance of Planning, and we've hosted the study here in the village that talked about environmental impact, transportation, the effects on the larger region around Chicago. It sounds very similar to the alliance that you're speaking of.
And John Grueling actually said, "Hey, wait a minute, I might have something to say about this."
Good question. We participated early in the alliance, also participated in reviewing the results of the OECD study. It really was a, it's a matter for us in terms of priorities. The, the work that Cook County President Toni Preckwinkle has put together on this regional initiative, which includes the seven northeast counties of Illinois, just to be, you know, sort of frank, actually looks like it's going to be returning a little more benefit to us. The three initiatives that we're excited about is the export initiative, helping small and medium-sized companies in the northeast Illinois area, I win their way, find their way through the, the export challenges that small businesses have, whether or not they know anything about it, how hard it is to participate, financing questions. A second one is the, the regional permitting issue for, for big trucks, which is really a drag on commerce in the Chicago metro area. One that was introduced yesterday that we're really excited about is foreign direct investment. You know, we're not only good at exporting things, but it really behooves us to start participating in the foreign investment opportunities that are out there, so. And the neat thing about this particular group Congressman, is it includes the, the county board chairman of all of those seven counties. And they bring with them their top economic development official and key leaders. And we've met three times and we've, we've really moved the cheese, so to speak. The alliance work is very good and we support it, but we're always looking for, you know, where can we get our best bang? And you asked me the question, so I answered. Thank you. And I also have my propaganda and I didn't worry as much as our faces, but I'll just leave that for you.
Hey, good afternoon now everyone, my name is Vicki Pledo, I'm a resident here. Thank you Congressman, thank you everyone else. When your chief of staff, I wasn't going to say anything, but when your chief of staff mentions the takeaways and the things that will come out of very good meetings like this, I may be a little less prone to be so thankful for the time, because as I know you are well aware, this is a big part of your job. It's probably the most important part of your job is doing these things. Time and resources are limited for it, but it's a huge part. But I did want to say in terms of takeaway items, and we talked a little bit about some of the initiatives that might be coming out of the President's office this year, things happening in the Congress, both houses of the U.S. Congress. Let one of the takeaway items be, please, for the love of dog, could the Congress not be a runner-up for the most do-nothing Congress again? You guys surely must go there to desperately want to do good things? Please find ways, please tell your colleagues that people here are not only looking to you, but to the whole lot of them. Please find ways to do things for people, because we can't continue not to have jobs initiatives. We can't continue to have silly, pointless arguments and semantics, little PowerPoint presentations about calling the Keystone Pipeline the Keystone Jobs Bill, which is ludicrous. Please look for ways to do things. People are counting on you and you know that and you feel it too. And I know somewhere inside each and every one of you, men and women up there like, you're counting on yourselves. You want to be one day the old guy who looks back on, "These are things I did with my life," not just things that kind of, "Oh, well, this is over now, my turn is up." So, thank you very much for coming out, but please do work hard to turn all this into some action items. Thanks.
May I respond real quick? Thank you, I agree and definitely want to be active, bring your results and value to the people that we get to represent. It's a big part of what we're talking about as a staff as we kick, kick off these next couple of years. And I'm, I'm encouraged, certainly feel like we've been very active, the House has passed hundreds of bills, not so much out of the Senate, so my hope is that there'll be some, at least debate going on, on issues, not always agreeing between the House and the Senate and the White House, but having that discussion of saying, "We need to get good things done for the people that we represent." That, that's why I'm, why I ran in the first place, why I've run for reelection, is I care about. why I've run for reelection, is I care about the families that I represent, and I want a brighter future for our kids than we've had. And challenges are big, but that's a time where we need leadership, and we need to step up and get something done. So, I am hopeful, I am encouraged. I think there were some things certainly coming out of the President's speech this last week, where there were areas of agreement, and I think that that can grow, and I talk about it quite a bit, but I think, you know, if you really get right down to it, 70 to 80% of the things, we would agree on, Republicans, Democrats, House, Senate, and White House. I think there's 20 or 30% that we disagree on, and, but if we can move forward on that 70, 80%, to me, that's victory, and let's, let's get that stuff done. We'll continue to struggle on the stuff we disagree on. Still fundamentally, I feel like the best product doesn't come out of Washington DC, but comes out of places like Plainfield. And so, where we can empower Plainfield to be more impactful for your citizens, getting out of the way, where we need to get out of the way, having good predictable regulation that makes sense, but not a sense of micromanagement, or breathing down Plainfield's neck, or your business's neck, that's what we want to see happen. So, my hope is absolutely what you've said, is that we'll be a productive, but with the real goal of having Plainfield be productive. Again, I think that's where good things happen for the people that we all represent.
Are there any other public comments?
Hello?
My name is John Mass. I moved to the Plainfield area three and a half years, three years ago. I currently reside on the east side of 59, right between Lockport Street and 126. At any given time, there's five streets blocked. You cannot get anywhere. Anytime you go anywhere, especially when they stop the trains, the trains will stop, and you can't get anywhere. I've had people come to my house, waited 45 minutes, because they don't know how to get to my house, any other way. If you know the way, you have to go up 135th and come back around, and, you know, it's just a big hassle. But I think, on the east side of 59 there, I think a lot of homes are not really worth what they really were, because of that problem. People know that you got train problems all the time. It's really, really a big mess around our area, and I think something needs to be done to alleviate that problem. I mean, especially you talk about emergency services, anything, you cannot, they can't go anywhere, they're stuck, as most people are. So, we really need to do something about the problem. And I also think, I've talked to a few of my neighbors, and they're looking about moving out, because I think there's an increase of train activity. And they don't like all the tankers driving through. If anything happens, there we go, these tankers driving through all the time, day and night, and it's just, just too many trains. Again, thank goodness they don't have, thank goodness they don't do the whistleblowing anymore, except on a few times, but, you know, it's, it's not the thing, but it's just, living around that environment, you get tired of hearing it. And, I mean, I've gotten used to it in three and a half years, but, you know, it's, we just need some help, some people there. I really do think it affects your property evaluations and everything, because if you know, and I bought the house, I knew nothing about the trains, nothing. Nobody told it to me, and nobody said anything to me when I bought my house. Luckily, I bought a wonderful house, but again, if I knew about the train issues, I don't think I would've bought it. And I think a lot of people look at it that way. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
If I could follow up with Mr. Mass's comments just briefly. Some of you know and are aware that a year ago, I had a personal emergency trapped on Center Street. I had moved positions three different times, hoping to get through, and as a type-two diabetic, I needed to eat some food, and I had a near emergency waiting for the train. So, it is a, it is a definite problem in our community.
Good morning. My name is Ed Orrock, I'm a resident of Plainfield. I just had a simple question, I guess. I think part of the meeting today was set up regarding the trains and the concerns, and I don't know if there's been really any discussion about what, if anything, can be done. So, I guess I would ask the Congressman, based upon your knowledge of what the rules, laws for railroads, maybe your staff could answer some of that. Is there anything that can be done to help alleviate some of the issues we're experiencing? Thank you.
Well, I think, I think there's a couple of different things that can be done. Some are quicker solutions, some are more long-term solutions. I think we have to look at all of those, and start preparing for each of those. I think, as far as the quicker ones, just to continue to lean on, push on, talk to, do everything we can with CN of talking about the problem, and finding other solutions that don't, that aren't so crippling and dangerous, quite honestly, to communities like Plainfield. There's gotta be other ways for them to operate safely, and do the checks that they need to do, but not here. I mean, and so, we've got to figure that out, continue to push, and whatever it takes to get them to listen. And sometimes it feels like we're getting that, sometimes it doesn't feel like we're getting that. And so, we want to stay engaged in that, we want to continue to work to make sure that we're, we're heard, that your concerns are heard, and that if there are problems, we work together to try and solve those problems, or see if there's another place again where what they're trying to do could take place, but just not right here, what's so crippling. I think longer-term solutions are things like 143, 143rd Street, where it's not gonna happen fast, but it needs to happen. And I think this is an opportunity for us, with the crisis, with the problem that we're feeling from the trains, and the absolute stoppage of people being able to move when crossings are blocked, highlights that we absolutely need to move forward in getting funding, recognizing that this is certainly important to get around the trains, but also just to free up the roads, even when there isn't a train problem, there still is a traffic problem in Plainfield. Because of just the unique situation, it's a blessing and a curse, you know, to have access to trains, to have access to great state roads. I've got a lot of communities that would quite honestly love to have that problem. They don't necessarily know what they're asking for, but, but it's true. I mean, there really is so much of what has made Plainfield great, is the incredible access that we have. And so, we want to celebrate that, but at the same time, figure out, we gotta be able to do this better. And so, if we can do that by opening up roads like 143rd, and that new access, saving time, saving money, getting trucks off the roads that people are using, and that's always ultimate concern of mine, is people being safe, families being safe, children being safe. And when we have blockages, you also see cut-through neighborhoods, people trying to find another way, as the gentleman mentioned, of, you kind of know the back routes, but there's also risk there when people who aren't familiar are trying to get quickly to someplace because they've been blocked, and what happens if a child runs out? I mean, we just have to do everything we possibly can to, to address these problems, so we never have that tragic story that we have to respond to. So, we're open, we want to, we want to help. What we think is the best solution is to continue to push on CN, for them to be responsive, to see if there's another way to do this in another place. We haven't gotten satisfactory answers yet, quite honestly. We've gotten, feels like some positive movement, and then maybe it pulls back a little bit, but we're not gonna let go, we're gonna stay on it. So, Brian, do you-
I think another answer for Mr. Orrock's question would be for maybe our staff to reach out to your staff, and see what grants may be available for a grade-separated crossing, and have our staff and Plank Department identify if it's even feasible, and where it would be, and see if there's any grants available. Obviously, there'd be a local share, we'd have to look at our budget for, but, and see if that's even an answer. And if it is, that would be a long-term solution, obviously. Thank you.
Well, Congressman, I know we've taken up all the time, I know you were able to give us, and we took a little bit more, so I want to thank you very much for attending. If there are any other public comments, I know that Mr. Person's Commander Novak and I will stay here afterward to be able to answer any other resident public comments, and we'd be happy to pass those on to your office, too, Congressman.
That'd be great. Just closing, again, thank you so much for doing this. We've always felt so welcome here, and encouraged, again, by the great work that you all are doing, and desire really to care for the people that, that you're serving, and that we're serving as well. So, thank you so much for this opportunity. Thank you all for being here. And please, if there are other suggestions, thoughts, questions, ways that we can be of help, let us know. We'll listen, we'll respect, we may not always agree on what the best next step is, but hopefully together, we will come to some good ideas and some good solutions that will be beneficial for all of us, and for the people that we want to work for, and for our future. So, thanks so much for always having, welcome, open opportunity for us to come in here, again, how we can do good things for the people that we want to serve. So, thank you so much.
I motion we adjourn.
Thank you, sir.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose the same sign. We are now adjourned. Thank you.